Starts Monday evening. First, we'll call a roll call. Members Garfield Reed.
Here.
Eric Gabriel.
Here.
Ed Abrams.
Here.
Lee Davis.
Here.
And I am present. We will start with the only agenda items. Who's the tonic waterworks appraisal by Raftellus? Mark go right ahead.
Okay, so if you'll just bear with me for a minute, I'm going to go ahead and promote our consultants from Raftellus. We have two here with us tonight, John Mistraccio and Toby Federer. And I just wanted to say while I'm promoting these guys, a copy of this report will be placed on our website tomorrow. We'll place it right on the homepage, so it's easy to find. And we'll also drop a copy in the who's atomic waterworks tab on the select board page, where we store all the other who's talk waterworks related documents. So you can look for that tomorrow morning. Just trying to find Toby. Okay, John and Toby, welcome. You're both promoted as panelists. And I'm going to go ahead and allow you to share your screen. And you can take it from here.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm gonna just, let's see here. All right, you should be seeing a cover page of a PowerPoint presentation. Great. Again, thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate that the opportunity to present our findings of the value of the who's atomic waterworks company system. My name is John Mistraccio. I was I'm the lead appraiser in this engagement in this effort and I'll go ahead and walk through the appraisal results with a pretty short presentation here and and then be able to be available to answer any questions they might have. All right, so the appraisal assignment that we were tasked with was to value the who's atomic waterworks company as a complete business enterprise and we have done so and we've done so in terms of a definition of value, which is which is called fair market value, and I'll define that here in just a second. But we applied appraisal standards that any any appraiser would need to follow and those appraisal standards are promulgated by the appraisal foundation, which publishes a set of standards called the Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice or Use Path. And so we followed use path in completing the appraisal work that we did. So the appraisal was for the hundred percent control and ownership interest in the who's atomic waterwork system. So it wasn't partial ownership wasn't a minor minority interest. It was for the full, complete ownership of the system. And the value that I'll present to you tonight is as of a certain date and that date is January 1st, 2023. So I mentioned that the kind of the definition of value that we are basing our evaluation on, and that is fair market value. And here's the definition from Massachusetts case law, which is the highest price, which a hypothetical willing buyer would pay for I pay a hypothetical hypothetical willing seller in an assumed free and open market. So that's that's the definition that we had to abide by. And there are there are a number of kind of inherent assumptions built into that definition. And one is that the there's a typical, there's the typical tension between a buy a normal buyer buyer and seller. So the buyer is looking for the to purchase a system for the lowest price, the seller is looking to looking for receiving the highest price in a in an open free market for the system. And there's neither one of them has any compulsion to buy or sell. Secondly, the assumption is that the the buyers assume to be a financial buyer and not a strategic buyer. And so what does what that means really is that we don't build in any specific synergies or strategic premiums that a any individual buyer might place on the system. It's purely a non synergistic value estimate that we come up with. And we also assume that both parties have perfect knowledge of the system. The buyer is independent from the seller. So there's no inner relationship between the buyer and seller. And the the track transaction is an asset sale for cash and not a capital stock sale or any type of other other transaction derivative that there might be. So those are some of the assumptions that we based our appraisal on. And I'm going to cut right to the chase and show you the resulting value that we've come up with. So our opinion of fair market value of the system is $2.3 million. And we we came up with that opinion of value considering three very common standard approaches to to value. And that's the income approach, the cost approach and the market approach. And we considered all three. And we also considered what's called a discount for lack of marketability, which I'll talk about here in just a few minutes. So let me just first talk about each of these three methods and what those entail and what the results of those different methods are. So the income approach is the first is the first method or approach I'll talk about. And under the income approach, what we're really trying to do is value the future income stream that the water system produces for for an owner. And so when we do that, we use the benefit stream that we look at is is cash flow or income. And we look at how that income might change over time. And the method that we specifically use is called the direct capitalization method where we we take the income stream and we can we assume or consider that that income stream is going to continue into the future at a constant growth rate. And so we take that every year of future income and we convert it back to present value and add add up all those future income streams. So in our analysis, we use this discount rate of 7.7%. We use the growth rate of 3.4%. And using these estimates, we derived an indication of value under this approach of $2.2 million. And so this is, this is, as I mentioned, only one of the three approaches that we looked at in terms of valuing the system. Next, we look at what's called the market approach and most probably, most of you are most familiar with the market approach. So it's very similar to when you buy or sell your house. There you're or a car or anything like that there. You're looking like, let's take the house example, you're looking at other house sales that are similar to your house and getting kind of getting an indication of what your house might be worth based on what other houses have sold in the recent past. So we do the same thing under the market approach. Except in the water sector, there are far, far fewer water utility sales transactions that are available to rely upon. And in this case, we found a total of seven transactions that we thought were reasonably close to to the who's atomic waters, water company system. One was in Massachusetts, one was in Connecticut, one was New York, two were in Virginia, one was in West Virginia. We considered we considered the the differences in those transactions versus versus the who's atomic system. And then we looked at what we call typical price multiple. So for example, when you're looking at your house and either buying or selling a house, you might look at a multiple, which would be a price per square foot. And so let's say your house next door sold for $200 a square foot. And your house has a certain amount of square foot, you can kind of imply an equivalent value for your house doing that. We do the same thing for a water utility system, but our our price multiples are a little different. So we look at price compared to revenue or sales. We look at price compared to the number of customer connections there are in the system. We look at price per the the cost of the original cost of the of the assets. Right? And then price per earnings and there are two measures of earnings that we use. That's EBITDA and EBITDA is earnings before interest taxes depreciation and amortization and then EBITDA is earnings before interest and taxes. So based on based on the seven transactions that we looked at and their purchase prices and their characteristics, we came up with a value under the market approach of about roughly $2.5 million. So that's the second approach we looked at. And then third, we evaluated the the asset approach and really the asset approach is looking at the assembly of all the all the different assets that make up the water system. So it's the pipes that are in the ground, the the treatment facility, storage tanks, other meters and other valves and other components that are in the system. We look at what those those components cost. And we we use either a replacement cost or what's called a reproduction cost. And then we adjust that replacement or reproduction cost for depreciation and there are really three forms of depreciation. We look at we look at physical deterioration. So that's over time, the assets would because of wear and tear, they 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 get old and then they'd have to be replaced. And that's that's what's called physical deterioration, one form of depreciation. We also looked at look at functional obsolescence. So does do the assets actually do the job that they're intended to do? And is there are there other new new technologies or new assets that would would do that differently or better? That's what's called functional obsolescence. And then third, we look at economic obsolescence and I'll talk about economic obsolescence in just just a moment here, but here what we show on the screen is the the reproduction cost new, if you're going to replace the system new, what that looks like and how much that would cost. And we estimated that at somewhere around $36 million. And then we considered the physical deterioration and functional obsolescence obsolescence on this particular slide. And when you look at the reproduction cost less depreciation, we estimate a an amount of 10 about $10 million for for that that estimate. But we're not, we're not finished with the with the asset approach and the last form of depreciation that we need to take into account is what's called economic obsolescence. And essentially what we're doing with economic obsolescence is testing whether the income or the earnings of the system or the company supports a value equal to that reproduction cost less depreciation estimate. So we came up with $10 million on the prior slide. What we are, what we wanted to do is look at if a if someone buys the system and they they require a 7.7% rate of return, what kind of what kind of earnings with the with the system or the company have to earn in order to support a value of $10 million? And here we said, okay, well, if we do that, then then the earnings must equal around $800,000 a year to support that $10 million value. And so when we look at the the history of the water company and the earnings and how much income that the system makes, excluding any type of capital reinvestments, the system's earnings are somewhere in the range of $200,000. So therefore, we conclude that there is economic obsolescence and we have to, we have to reflect that in the in the value under the asset approach. So here in this slide, this shows the asset approach, considering all all three forms of depreciation, physical deterioration, functional obsolescence and economic obsolescence. And when we make those adjustments under the asset approach, we come up with a value indicator of about $3 million. So now we've looked at all three approaches to value and we've got to reconcile the three different methods and so here's how we did that. So we looked at each of the three methods. We looked at the the information that was used to come up with the the value indicator under each methods, we weighed the the limitations of each of the methods and we and we combined all three in a way to come up with a a value of two and a half million dollars when we look at all three of the methods combined. So that's slightly different than our value fair market value opinion of 2.3 million. So it's slightly higher. But we haven't addressed one last factor and that's what's called consideration of marketability factors. And so what we did under that component of our work was we looked at the potential buyers of the system and who might be interested in possibly buying the system if, let's say, the owners of the who's atomic water system puts a big for sale sign up on the side of the road. What kind of buyer, what kind of buyers would we receive? See, even how how many buyers would there be? So based on our our knowledge of the water sector and in the region, we don't believe that there will be a ton of buyers for the system. There there won't be a bidding war by any means. The the number of potential buyers will will likely be very finite. And so the interest in in this system in the market is going to be is going to be pretty limited. And because of that, we included a very small discount for lack of marketability as as kind of our last step of our value assessment. And so that's why we can't we, that's how we got from 2.5 million down to 2.3 million as the fair market value estimate. So so in conclusion, that estimate of fair market value of 2.3 million considers all three of those approaches that I that I went through. And it also considers the marketability of the system if it was to be put up for sale. So with that, that was kind of the gist of my short presentation here. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So we'll start with questions from the board. Just if you could take that down, so I can actually see the board members, it would make it easier. Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yeah. Go ahead. Thanks. So 83 pages are very dense and I only have three questions. Regulations. And this is not something I know anything about. So really, these are just to clarify for me. The hypothetical buyer definition was a private company as a buyer, right? I mean, I know you considered municipalities, but does that change?
It really, it doesn't change much if you were to say, well, no, the hypothetical buyer is going to be a public entity. But what we did do is look at who are they active buyers and sellers of water systems in the region, in the water sector in general. And what we found was that most of the of the market activity is with private companies and either investor owned companies or just private private water companies buying and selling selling systems here, there could be, there could be, you know, obviously the town could be a potential buyer. But if there's only one potential buyer, that's a that's a public buyer. And there, let's say there are two or three private potential buyers. The the most predominant, the most typical buyer that you would you would use as a as part of the analysis would be the private sector buyer. And that's kind of how we got to that hypothetical buyer. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, the growth estimates, which that was pretty low anyway, but did you consider people pulling the plug and drilling wells, which has been happening?
So in terms of growth, what we're what we're using for the the growth rate reflects the potential growth in income. And and because this is a this is a regulated utility, the Massachusetts DP that be DPU regulates the utility and allows for a rate of return on rate base. So there's a there's an allowable return that the the company can earn. That's not necessarily that's not necessarily dependent upon
Number of users.
The number of customers. They'll get that return regardless of number of customers. So we looked at, we looked at growth in terms of population growth and potential there. But that was more of a a factor that we consider.
Then here's the this one's the tough one for me, the asset value, and I may not be understanding it. But the you accepted the $32 million needed upgrades figure? That there are earlier.
Yes, we understand that that's that's a need.
So is that what brought it down to 10? And if not, because I don't think that is, did that figure in at all?
So to some extent, it did bring it down to 10. So we look at age and condition of the system and what the needs are and that that impacted the depreciation factor that we added. So that gets us to 10. And then and then we do that final step in terms of whether whether the income supports a $10 million valuation. And we said, no, it doesn't. And we had to adjust it further.
Okay, so that I guess it was the 10 that I had a question on.
Okay.
Right. Did you not say, well, it's worth this minus the 32 million that they're going to need to put into it? It sounds like that's not what you did, right?
No, that's not, that's not what we did. We looked at. So looking forward at the the needs for capital investment, that was, that was a consideration. However, for any capital investment that's made, that raises the the base with which you can earn earnings are. So if you if you if you pump $32 million of capital investment into the system, you can, your earnings are going to go way up because you can, the regulators will allow you to earn earn off of that. So 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 that so that kind of mutes the the downward pressure on value because because of that earnings potential.
And then when you look when the 7 million you subtracted, did you when you figure the earnings potential, did you then come up with a $7 million number to subtract? Or did you say, well, 3 million is the maximum they can? In other words, had the number been 14 million, would you have still gotten to 3 million? Because you're coming up from zero rather than down from.
Yes, I think I think we would come, we would land at the 3 million. So that's where that's really where the income approach and the asset approach kind of intersect. And so you have to test that asset approach with with the the income potential of the company. And so let's say we came up with 20 million as the as the asset value, we would still, we'd still have to deduct an adjustment to get down to three because the earners just don't support anything more than that amount at this point in time. So.
Okay, thank you. I took one public utilities regulation class 40 years ago. This is the first time I've gotten to use it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for the board? Go ahead, Lee. You're muted, Lee.
Thanks. I had I had crying cats in the background. Thank you. It's very, very informative. I guess this is more of a bigger picture question since you are an appraiser and you know, when people are, if there's a willing seller and there's a buyer, you know, people generally get their own appraiser and they're hoping for an outcome, whether it's a high number or a low number. So I guess this is kind of a bigger question is, you know, if hypothetically there was a seller that wanted to get their own appraiser and your appraisal was put up against another appraisal that was considerably different. How does that work? I mean, where where do people go with that?
Um, I guess, first of all, I hope that our appraisal product, I hope that you can't tell or anyone that reads it wouldn't be able to tell whether I'm working for the buyer or the seller because we are completely independent. It's our obligation to be to provide an independent opinion of value. But that doesn't mean that two appraisers aren't going to have differences in of opinion and how different different aspects are going to be addressed in the in the appraisal. So if you have two appraisers with with two different values and and this and it's a negotiated sale, then it just you that those two data points kind of come into that negotiation and and any other factors that come into play in terms of how how you end up at a purchase price get get considered. So that's, that's one way it could could happen. And then the maybe other ways that it could happen is if if it if it's a public entity looking to to take a private entity and and there's a difference in opinion in terms of what the value is, then that that could go towards litigation and then it's the court that decides. You know, the finder of fact is the is it's determinate and what the actual value is. So that's another way it could, it could play out for public entities.
So to clarify, this could be used legally as a document to to back up.
Sure.
Okay, just one other question. Is this is this is good for one year? Is that correct? Appraisals, if it was going to be used for a sale or is that kind of general?
Yeah, I think I think one year is probably a good, good timeframe. You know, there's not a lot that that tends to change over time, but you know, it if there's additional work that's that's put into the system, that would that would change the value if market conditions change, that would change the value. And those things generally, you know, they don't change week to week and oftentimes not month to month either. So I think a year is a good timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Eric?
Yes, John, thank you for your thorough report and the overview there. I guess when when doing the valuation, how much consideration was put on not only the infrastructure, but just the general issues that the system is on record for having as far as you know, the HAA five in the water. You know, just the series of issues that they have with infrastructure and you know, complaints to the DEP, all that, I guess, just wondering how that plays into this.
Yeah, so that does come into play in really I would say it comes in into play in in two of the methods. So the the income approach and the asset approach that is considered. And on the income approach, it comes into play in terms of the the discount rate that we select as well as the the incomes, the the cash flow income stream is after annual capital capital reinvestments. And so as there's more more capital needs, it reduces the 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 net cash flow after after spending on on those annual capital expenditures. So it comes into play there. And then on the on the asset approach, again, we 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 discounted the the treatment component of the system significantly because of those factors that you mentioned. So there's there's really very little value that we placed on the treatment system because of the magnesium issue and other other water quality issues. So so I guess that's how we that's how we addressed it.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
Um, one other question. Did you have a full and complete access to everything that you needed to do to do this appraisal? Or was there anything that you weren't able to get to that you had to then make a guesstimate on?
Um, I I think we had everything that was was available. We we were out, we we did a site walk with the owner. We received operating reports, financial reports. I think we've we got everything that we we were hoping to get in terms of completing the the assignment.
Thank you.
Any one else?
Any one else? So we will turn it over now to the. Attendees. There are seventy nine attendees.
All right, I was muted. I have a question.
Go ahead.
All right, sorry, I was muted. So, um, the price, thank you for your presentation. So if I will, if you will, the price at two point three is as is, if you will?
Yes, sir.
And so someone to come in would potentially have to spend the. Quite a few dollars to make it whole. Uh, uh, just for using a, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, any.
Which would definitely cause everything to rise in the cost.
Sure, yeah. A- any capital. Improvements that would be necessary, um. To address any regulatory issues or, or water quality issues or aging infrastructure issues that would be on the new. Um, the new, any new owner, um, so that, yeah, so, so the. The two point three million. Considers that a new, new owner will have to. Do some additional capital investments in the future.
Okay. Now, did you note the amount, if you will? I don't remember was it what the amounts to, to fix the pipes, etc.?
So there was a, we, we reviewed, uh, an A E com report that we're, we were provided with and there was a capital. There was a capital needs estimate that we referenced in our report, and I think we even put the table in terms of what the future capital needs. Um, are anticipated to be in the system. So, um, that is in the report. I just don't recall the specific figure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's the thirty two million dollar figure over twenty years.
Right.
Yeah. So there are eighty attendees. The questions, we'll start with Frank. Just need to give your name and address. Just unmute yourself, please.
I'm Frank Gunsberg, uh, twenty six Hemlock Hill in Great Barrington. Um, couple of things. First of all. The comment about, um, if the appraisers can't agree. Uh, in commercial real estate, which is what I'm very familiar with. Normally you avoid a lawsuit by just having a third appraiser that would then, uh, be a final arbiter. He would review the two appraisals and give a final adjustment as to what it was. That's the way you do it generally to avoid. Um, a, a lawsuit. But the point I wanted to make is, um. I, when you buy property and there's deferred maintenance, in this case. Uh, are the, are the, is the equipment up to speed? And the water quality needs to be dealt with. That is normally not. A number that you would add to the price. That is a number that if it's two point three million. But you have to spend a million and a half dollars to correct. A deferred maintenance issue. That is normally something that comes off the price. If the fair market value for a clean, well-run system is two point three. So I, I, I'm, I'm out of my league here. I know that. I'm not suggesting that, uh, the two point three is what I said it was, but I just want to point that out.
Okay, thank you, Frank. C M Heller.
Hi. I've observed the.
If you would say your name and address, please, full name and address.
Oh, my name's Glenn Heller and I live in Monterey. And I'm not a Housatonic resident, obviously, but I've been.
So typically, I, I'm going to let you speak, but typically we reserve this time to residents, but go right ahead.
Well, I'm concerned that the proposed thirty million dollars that they would have to spend to upgrade and repair the system. This is Massachusetts. This is inflation going on. What if that number is, ends up being double or triple? What does that do with all your figures? And granted. If you spend triple of that, you can raise your rates under the rules of the D P U. But. On the other hand, if people can't afford rates that are three times higher. You're going to have people going to abandon the system or just, uh, move away. So. The bottom line is what if that thirty six million dollars investment amount is not sufficient? What if it? Actually is in fact a hundred million dollars? What does that do with all the calculations?
Thank you. Do you want to just briefly answer that?
Yeah, um, I would just say that that issue, um, in terms of affordability of, of future capital needs. Is present regardless of a change in ownership, right? So the, the current owner. Um, if, if they're facing that amount of capital investment would also. Um, you know, have to contend with those affordability issues. Um, so I guess one. One kind of maybe a little bit unique, um. Thing about the water sector is the, the way. Um, water companies. Generate income and increase their income over time is. Is through capital investment. So the, the, if they make a capital investment. They're able to, to, to earn a return on that. And so, um. Certainly. You know, if the numbers were drastically different than what, what we were provided, we would. Want to take a look at that, but, um. Uh, you know, it's, um. There wouldn't be a situation where that would turn the value negative or anything like that. Or, um, so. Um, I guess that's the best way, best way I can answer that question.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Deborah Herman?
Deborah Herman, three, seven, three North Plain. Uh, I want to know whether or not you consider, uh, the potential cause to Housatonic Water of. Uh, consumer lawsuits or. Legal action. In calculating the value of the company.
No.
The company is facing a demand letter that I'm a party to that letter and potentially other. Legal action in the future.
Um, so no, we, um. We assume that. There was no. Litigation or pending litigation on the water company. I think that's one of the assumptions that we have in our report. So. Um, so the answer is no. Um, that is not taken into account.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trevor Forbes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Trevor Forbes. Hopefully you can hear me. Um. Three, five, North Plain Road. Uh, thank you very much for taking my. Questions, observations. A couple of things to follow up on Deborah Herman's point. I would think that, um, uh, some account has to be taken. Of legal action in terms of the end value of this particular business. Um, I've got a couple of questions in fact here. One is that. Going back to your income assumption that the more capital you throw into this, the more you can raise the prices. I mean, the price of, uh, water in Housatonic, I think is already higher than the price of Great Barrington. So it would seem to me totally illogical. That you would actually have much scope to actually, uh, get a return. Uh, commensurate with the capital you have to put into it, which would undoubtedly reduce the value of this particular business. Further than I think you've taken account of. The second point that I would make is you're using a, an M P V basis of this. So you have time value. That actually helps in terms of, uh, creating, uh, a higher value. And but that does actually assume that, for example, things like, uh, uh, putting in capital, you can do over a twenty year period. What happens if you actually have to stump up the thirty two million to make this into utility that work properly? Say within the next five years. That again will reduce the time value that you get from that. And as a result of that, will reduce. The overall value of the business. Am I correct in that?
You are correct. So, yeah, so the, the timing on capital spend does have an impact on the present value. No, no, no question. Um, so, um, depending upon when. When the needs are. Uh, are, need to be expended. You would, so let's say with your example. The needs would have to be expended in the, in the first five years. Well, you would have. You would have more capital investments dollars going out. Than income coming in and then your income stream would grow, but it would grow, it won't grow until like, let's say year six.
And it may not, but, but it may not in, increase at all if you're already charging too much for the water. This is the point I'm making. So.
Right.
So assumptions there that, that may not actually pan out.
If, so. If there are, i- if the Massachusetts D P U. Recognizes affordability issues with. Uh, raising rates to be able to generate income to support. The capital program plus a rate of return, then what would likely happen is that. The owner and the regulator would negotiate a, a, an implementation timeline, timeline that would. That would address those affordability concerns. So. Those are very. They're, they're, they're very unknown at this point in terms of what that, what that might look like. So. Yeah, could it have an impact on value? It, it could. Um, so we had to, we had to document our, our assumptions in terms of what our value is based upon and, and, um, and so.
But again, you're assuming that this is, um, a company that's providing a product. That is suitable at this particular time, but it isn't quite clearly. Because they have carcinogens in the water and they have manganese in the water. So this is not a product that is actually, uh, fit for purpose. So there is an element of, uh. Upfront, um, costs that has to come into this. To actually provide something where the consumers are going to be happy to pay whatever they're paying at the moment for it. So there's an element there. That tends to suggest to me that your valuation you've put on this. Is assuming everything else is fine, but it isn't. So this seems to me to be, uh. Uh, very much, um, uh, an optimistic valuation in that sense. That could actually end up being a lot less than you've actually indicated at two point three million.
Can I ask a piggyback on that? Just because I think I know the answer and if I do, then I understand this. Which is. You. That it doesn't affect the purchase price. Um, because if, say, another purchaser were to buy it, a for-profit purchaser, they'll get the increased return. Um, for the investment that they put in. So it doesn't affect the price. If somebody like us buys it. Uh, who we are concerned that people can afford their water, if the town buys it. Um. That's a better thing for the, um. The ratepayers and the people who have to drink the water, but it doesn't affect the fair market value. And if it did get to court. Right? If we offer something lower and it does go to court, they're going to point to what a for-profit buyer would. Ask. I don't know if that was clear.
Yeah, Mr. Raiders, I, I think that, I think it generally is right. And that's, that's kind of how our, our view is as well. Um, the, although, um. The, um, the public speaker that just mentioned, mentioned the, the limitations on. Rate adjustments. That is, that's a, that's a factor that. Impacts both private companies and. And municipalities, the. Any rate case that shows significant rate increases. Is scrutinized on the private sector side quite a bit and. And then it's a, then it's really a negotiation in terms of how. How quickly and, and what projects can you, can you prioritize to make the water quality better without? Without, um, impacting the, um, the ratepayers. And sometimes that involves. State funds, S R F loans or, or subsidized loans that, that reduce the cost of capital, which could be. You know, could be considered, but it, but that's really beyond the. Beyond the consideration of, of, of the valuation that, at the point in time that we, we value the system. So.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you.
Phil Lorenstein? Did we lose Phil?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
All right, you had me muted. All right. Um. Phil Lorenstein, four Alfred Road. Um. You know, based on the, the brief presentation tonight, I think it just highlights that all these methodologies deal with all the uncertainties about the actual cost. Of bringing the system back to an acceptable level of water quality. And I think some of the other questions have mentioned that. Just looking at the, but looking at the income approach. Uh, I, I, I focusing in on that free cash flow number of ninety five thousand per year, which is obviously critical to the result in that methodology. You know, perhaps all the detail is in the presentation, which the public hasn't seen yet. But can you speak to? Generally speaking, how you get to that number? Because I've seen the, the publicly available income statement of, of the water company. And so I'm just, I have some guesstimates as to how you got there, but. Uh, at the end of the day, you're probably, uh, removing the executive compensation. And adding some assumption relating to the, uh, the, the additional amount of annual maintenance required as a part of the. Improvement plan. My knee-jerk reaction is you may have lowballed that number in terms of what the annual additional annual maintenance would be. But can you, can you? Provide a little more detail on that?
Yeah, so that's, that's cash flow as well. It's, it doesn't reflect any non-cash expenses like depreciation or other. Uh, amortizations that, that, um, makes it. So it's, it's, it's operating cash flow. Um, and it does factor in, um, uh, an annual maintenance, uh, amount and that. There was a maintenance repair amount that I, the figure escapes me, but I, somewhere in the range of. Um. Around one percent of the replacement cost of the assets. Um, the other thing that we, we looked at and, and which is very typical is when you, when you look at. Annual depreciation and what, what level of, of recurring maintenance and I call it capital maintenance that, um, is appropriate. We look to, um. We look to industry guidelines for that. And so our capital reinvestment for maintenance has been. Or in, in the appraisal is somewhere around one point six times depreciation and that's, um. I don't think that's lowballed. I think that's very consistent with other. Uh, smaller systems that are dealing with aging infrastructure issues and regulatory issues. So. Um, that's how we get to the, the, um, the net cash flow figure. And yes, the details are in the report that, uh, will be available.
And I'm sorry, one last question. Is that before or after the, uh, a debt, uh, uh, I presume a, an increased debt service cost to pay for some capital improvements?
It's pre-debt. It's a free cash flow.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Phil. Eileen Mooney.
Uh, I, I think this was just answered. But did you take into account outstanding loans?
So, um. Are the, the, the value that we've come up with is a, um, is a. Asset transaction value. Um, so any loans that the owner has. Would not transfer to a, to the new buyer. So the, the asset compensation would be. Our, our value estimate. And that would provide all the assets for the system without, without the debt, without the, um, specific liabilities of the company.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm confused. This is not my field. Uh. So that existing loans would not have been. Deducted when you gave the amount. The, the estimated value.
So, so that's correct. This is a value of the, of this, of the sys- the assets of the system. That's correct.
Thanks.
Okay, there's no one else. So I'll give one more chance to the select board members. As you're muted. Any select board member? Lee, go ahead.
Um, so just, uh, one last question. So if there was a plan. Let's say a capital plan to say, you know, let's say they were doing filtrations or they were, you know, had a strategy on replacing pipes. And it was a phased approach. Um, is that something that? As an appraiser, you could factor in and, um. Recalculate the appraisal based on, you know, a, kind of a, a strategy of phasing in a capital infrastructure plan or. You know, if we knew that they were going to be replacing, you know, a certain amount of pipes and doing, uh, you know, filtration system. And. How would that factor in or, or could that be used in a, an appraisal?
So, um. So um. Yeah, so i- i- it, it could be. So there's a, there's a, a, an income approach called a discounted cash flow approach. We. We used kind of a single period um. A, a single year um. Model for the income approach. But if we had multi-years of annually, this is the amount of capital spend that will be, will be made into the system and. We could make some estimates in terms of, okay, well, what would the revenues? Um, change to, to support those capital investments. We could calculate a year-by-year um, net. Net cash flow amount and then use that, that um, income stream to recalculate the income approach. So that's. That's sometimes done when you have, when you have really good information and a plan going forward in terms of what, what, what is gonna look like. Um, here we didn't really have that. We had some guidelines on over the next twenty years. This is the amount that we think the system's gonna need, but we didn't really. Know exactly how that was gonna play out. So we didn't use that method, but you could, you could use that under this approach. And then. The other thing you can do is like, um, if a town was a, was a potential buyer, you can look at your own. What does that look like? Under, you know, if the town owned the system, how would that impact? Um, what rates would need to be in order to, um, to pay for that? How would, how would the expenses change? How would the revenues change? And you could run a, run a model as a town system and. Get a real good sense in terms of what, what customers would have to pay if that situation played out. Um, so, um, so I hope, hopefully that answers your question.
That does. Thank you.
Okay, saying no more from the select board. We'll start citizen speak time, which could be about any topic except the airport, of course. Anyone have anything else to say?
Uh, Steve, if you don't mind while we're waiting for hands to come up. Uh, a number of people joined the meeting uh, later. Uh, so I just wanted to mention in case anyone missed it earlier that we will have this report posted tomorrow on the homepage of our website. We'll also have it posted on the Houstoc Water Works tab, which is located on the select board page of our website. So we'll have it in multiple locations.
Thank you very much, Mark. Okay, seeing no other hands up. Any media time? And seeing no hands up. Any other select board announcements?
Um, just uh, we're up to eighty-two attendees right now.
From eighty-one.
Oh, down eighty-one now. And there's, sorry.
Okay, let me see. Go ahead. Charlie Williamson, go right ahead.
Can you hear me, Steve?
We can.
Charles Williamson, forty-eight Blue Hill Road. I just have one question and we might not have an answer, but. When does the Board of Health get involved with unsatisfactory water, be it sold in Housatonic? Uh, why isn't the town, the Board of Health assigning once in a while a fine? To motivate Housatonic Water Company to do something. If they were fined, I don't know, just say five hundred dollars for a month. For one month. It might make them think, well, maybe next, next year it's gonna be worse because. I, I know what you people are doing. It's great. But. In the three years you've been talking about this, the water hasn't gotten any better. And you know this year, June, July and August and September, you're gonna have dirty water in Housatonic this year. Next year, in the following year. I don't see any solution to this. And uh, getting fines motivate people. That's my only question.
Yeah, and, and you're correct. We, we don't have the answer to that, but that would be a question for the Board of Health. That's, it's a good question.
Well. And like, I say some more?
Yeah, of course. Go right ahead.
We know that they're, they're finding carcinogenics in the uh, in the water. And I'm wondering if the Board of Health has even run a statistical. Is the death rate in Housatonic from cancer higher than the national average? I think there's some really questions out there about health and young children. I, I always gets me is. We know that there's three and four-year-olds and even younger drinking that water. What's the long-term effect? I'm just wondering that the Board of Health should get more involved with this. I think uh. It should, if, if you motivate somebody with a fine, when you get a speeding ticket, you do slow down. That's it. Charles Williamson, thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Mark, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a short answer to that question. And the short answer is that uh, the Board of Health does not have jurisdiction over. Public water supplies in Massachusetts, only private water supplies. And this is considered a public water supply and it's regulated by DEP.
Thank you, Mark, for that clarification. Frank, go right ahead.
Yes, uh, just two, two things. One on the. Oh, Frank Gunsberg, twenty-six Hemlock Hill in Great Barrington.
Thank you, Frank.
Um, two things. Number one. Based on that last comment. I'm having a little trouble understanding why the state of Massachusetts doesn't come in. And just take this over and get it right. I can't believe the years that have gone by already and that are coming forward. Where, yeah, it's, i- i- it's in our town, but just like you said. It's a state-regulated water system and it's polluted. So I'll just mention that. And the other thing I wanted to say. And Steve, you know this because I've told this to you and to Mark. Um, I wish we had a system. Where it wasn't hunt and peck to find out when meetings are. Uh, it, you know, i- if it's in the Eagle and it's in the Berkshire Edge, or it's somehow where we have a. A, an email address or something that people can look at a monthly calendar to see what things are. It makes it easy. I didn't know about this meeting until I read about it this morning in the Edge and the article didn't say anything about how to get on the Zoom. And I contacted you and Mark and, and you guys let me know and I, and I found it, but I shouldn't have to do that. So I recommended a, a monthly um, uh, calendar be posted, uh, maybe in the shopper's guide or whatever. And I was told that that's not gonna happen, which is okay. I'm just trying to come up with ideas where we all can know what's going on. Without, oh, I'm sorry, I missed that meeting.
You can sign up uh, on the town's website for agendas to be sent to you. So you know when meetings are of different boards.
Okay, well, I didn't know that. Thank you.
Yeah, you can.
We also did send out a, a reverse nine-one-one call and anyone that's registered on our code red system would have received the call. Uh, a text message, an email, however you subscribe. So we did.
Okay. I'm seventy-seven years old, so I have to have my eight-year-old grandson tell me how to do that.
Frank, just, Frank, just reach out to my office. We'll help you get registered.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And that applies to anyone, uh, anyone who wants to get on and doesn't know how, just call the town manager's office, please. Okay, Elizabeth Rockefeller. Just unmute yourself, Liz, please.
Elizabeth Rockefeller, two eighty-four Park Street, North Great Barrington. Um. Regarding that last question about our statement about the state, why doesn't? The town contact the federal DEP? And look to them for some help and guidance um, and bypass the state. Because the state has not done anything yet to help us either. So that's my question.
Mark, do you wanna delve into that?
I, I don't know the answer to that. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure that EPA has uh, any regulatory oversight over our Massachusetts water system. But we can certainly ask that question.
Charlie, you have something else you'd like to add. Go right ahead.
Yes, Charles Williamson, forty-eight Blue Hill Road. Uh, in your remark there, uh, Mark, about uh. State DPW, I apply that then to them and not the Board of Health. It really seems like the state is doing nothing. They're turning a blind eye. If they find them. Then they would be motivated. But in response with Liz Rockefeller, what she's stating is the federal. EPA, if you request them to come in and do a study on Housatonic Water System. They will come in and do it because uh, the capital of Louisiana, Jackson. Their water system was so messed up, the federal EPA and it's under the Clean Water Act. You are to be provided with clean water. You're balancing on a fine edge of one of these days. Housatonic could be all sick with water that's polluted. But the EPA will come in and do a study. And then it's up to the owners to upgrade if the EPA finds uh, problems. And it's the law. The, the federal government will come in.
Thank you, Charlie.
I think the uh, I think the upgrade in uh, Mississippi was over eight hundred thousand, eight hundred million dollars, but. You can look it up. It's on YouTube. You could take a look at uh, Jackson, uh, Louisiana. And see that you can get help from the federal government. It's time somebody did something before you have a bit, uh, a, a national disaster down there. And Housatonic. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other select board comments before we adjourn? I see none. By unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Thank you.